Welcome everybody to today's meeting of the Governance Committee. Please my request that all mobile phones and other such equipment are turned to silent so as not to disturb the meeting. And I'm told there is no fire test planned for today, so if there is any emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square. I'm going to start by asking people to introduce themselves, we'll start with the councillors.
Mark, please.
councillor Mark Jones, Burnley Ward.
councillor Sean O'Maher, Richards Manor Ward.
councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubbo, Hillsborough Ward.
my name's Diane Hurst, I'm a member for Richmond Ward.
Andrew Sanger councillor for Forward Ward substituting for councillor Penny Baker.
Jotun councillor for Dorantoli.
I'd probably better introduce myself as well, so I'm councillor Sue Alston, I'm vice-chair of this committee and substituting for the chair today. Officers, please.
I'm David Hollis, I'm the interim director of legal and governance.
Jo Bell democratic services officer.
James Anderson director of policy performance and communications.
Good afternoon, I'm Laurie Brennan, I'm head of policy and partnerships.
Hi, I'm Emily Stanbrook Shaw, policy and improvement officer.
Thank you, so I'm going to now just ask Jay for the apologies for absence.
Chair, I've received apologies from councillors Penny Baker, Julie Groco, Mary Lee, Mike Levere, Brian Lodge and Mick Rooney.
Thank you. There are no items on today's meeting to exclude the exclusion of press and public. I just need to ask if there are any declarations of interest from members? No, thank you. So we'll move on then to the minutes of the previous meeting which start at page nine. I'll just go through each page and if anybody's got any questions, comments or issues, please just shout out. So anything on page nine? Page 10? Page 11? And the last bit on page 14. Okay, can we agree those as a true record? Thank you. So item six is the item for public questions. We have received a number of public questions from Ruth Hubbard concerning the process that we are undertaking for review of this committee and in particular the relevance to the design principles we had and on public engagement and how we are measuring our success. Ruth has indicated that she's happy with written answers and given that they are long questions, we are intending to provide a written response to her and they will be published along with the questions in the minutes of the next meeting. So we now move to, sorry Chair, can we hear what the questions are? Or give us a summary, I mean, you know, as members, and also...
I might have to, because I haven't got the new, oh you've got a written copy.
Thank you. Three pages. Do you want to raise any comments at this stage or shall I move on?
Move on Chair, but I just thought that we as members ought to...
See them before, absolutely. Okay, so we then move to item seven which is our main business for today which is the updated report to the Governance Committee. So this consists of a report on progress and feedback from the review that's been undertaken and then an appendix of proposed actions. What I intend to do is Emily's going to give us a summary of the report and then we'll take comments and questions on the report itself and then we'll separately take questions and comments on the appendix because I think that's where most of the issues will be raised, if that's acceptable. Okay, Emily?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so the report you've got today sets out the activity that we've undertaken as part of the engagement phase of the review and plays back to you what we heard through that process. It identifies a set of issues and suggests that they're the set of issues we take forward into, to develop into actions and recommendations which is the appendix one part of the report and really asks you whether you feel like that's the right set of recommendation, right set of issues for us to focus on as we move into the next part of the review. In terms of engagement activity, we had some really good conversations with members and officers through the drop-in sessions and in-person meetings that we went to, a much more limited number of conversations with citizens. The survey was a useful tool for gathering some insight but the small number of, the small sample size we had in terms of responses has meant that it's been quite hard to draw concrete conclusions from the quantitative questions that we asked. But everything that we have heard and gathered, we've fed back to you in this report. And the report structures the engagement feedback around the 15 questions that we set out as part of the scope of the review. I wasn't intending to go through all of that, there's an awful lot but obviously very happy to take questions on anything in there. In terms of appendix one, so that's the list of issues that we're proposing that we take forwards, that's split into three groups of issues. So the first set of issues are ones that would require us to change the current system, so that might be a constitutional change or a change to practice and procedure, and those are the ones that we're suggesting Governance Committee takes forward to develop recommendations on, have further discussions on through workshops with the aim of developing recommendations on how you want to deal with those. The second set of issues you've got there are issues really that require us to improve the way we do things, so how we support the system, how we describe the system, and they're things that we think officers just need to get on and do, they're things we should be doing anyway, so making sure that officers understand how to get a decision to a committee, which committee it needs to go to, making sure that officers are equipped with the right tools to produce a good report, those kind of things. So we're proposing that we can pull that into an action plan and bring that, bring progress reports back to you on those. And then there's a third set of issues, just a couple, that we've kind of considered to be pieces of work in themselves beyond the scope of this review and they're how we council-wide engage and involve the public based on the findings of the involved report, that feels like a standalone piece of work, we're not going to find the answers to that as part of this review. And also the consideration of the relationship and balance of decision-making between policy committees and local area committees. So we're suggesting that Governance Committee might want to give some thought to who, where, when, might consider those issues. If you're happy with what we've set out or we can make any changes based on the discussion today, it would be our intention to try and prioritise the issues that would require a decision at the AGM. So anything that needs a constitutional change, we would bring to the first set of workshops so that we can develop recommendations aiming to sign off your final report and recommendations at your April committee meeting in time for anything to be agreed at the AGM in May. Is that okay?
Thank you. Just before we start with people's comments, just to sort of go through what we're actually being asked to do today. So we're being asked to consider and note the findings from the engagement phase of this review, to note that the findings that relate to full council have been passed to the full council working group, and then consider whether the issues identified for the action planning phase are the right ones, agree that those that require a change to the system are taken forward to the Governance Committee action planning workshops, which we are all getting in our diaries currently, agree that those requiring improvements on explaining, communicating, supporting the system are actioned by officers with progress reports to come back to this committee, and identify which issues can be actioned prior to the AGM and which will be longer-term issues. And then also consider how those issues relating to the wider system and beyond the scope of our review are taken forwards. So bearing all that in mind, are there any questions or comments on the main body of the report before we move into the actual list of actions? Jo?
Thank you Chair, yes, I mean, I suppose, I'm happy with the proposal and the division into three categories, I'm slightly nervous about the timetable from now because it's already February. It feels like we've had a year to do this. Obviously with the six-month review, it was called that because it kind of started after six months and obviously the reason for that was that we were to see how it worked for a while first. And we have to not only, I mean, the items under appendix one that may go into, end up going to constitutional changes that go to the AGM, we both need to kind of develop options, develop proposals to do that and then discuss as a committee and agree those proposals. And it seems to me that agreeing those proposals is really what this committee is for and we've spent a whole year and obviously we didn't have them until now. I'm slightly nervous we're going to run out of time or not be able to give them the fullest consideration that they merit because, you know, nice as the AGM is, nice as full council is, a great forum Lord Mayor, with only two minutes to speak, those of us who are a little bit more verbose may find ourselves unable to make the points we would wish to make. So yeah, can I have a, can we have some timetable I suppose is the question, both for developing the proposals that we think might deliver some of these, some of these issues and then for debating them thoroughly as a committee I suppose is the ask.
I'll let Emily come in on that if she wants to, but the first thing I say is that I don't think we see the AGM as the endpoint for this. It's the first time when we think we'll be going back with taking what comes out of this. I think one of the asks is going to be, what's the times when we get into the next planning stages, which of these do we think we can do in time for the AGM, which do we think needs longer consideration and therefore what's the timescale for doing those? Because there are a lot of things and as you've rightly said, giving this committee the full time to consider all of that and try and get something to the AGM is not practical, I don't think.
Not much of a religion, but the dates for the action planning workshops will be winging their way to you in the next couple of days and yes, it is, I'm nervous too. But there are things that we have already kind of started on the officer side, things about report writing, you know, so there's a lot in there that will be longer-term projects and that we can start, make a start with now. And we're trying to build a timetable that's realistic and yet will potentially go into next year for some of those, but prioritising those things that you would want to have in place for the start of the municipal year if there are those kind of fundamental changes that we need to start with.
Thank you, Sean, did you want to?
Two things, one coming back to what David just said, can you only amend the constitution at an AGM or can it be done at other times of the year? Because otherwise we're saying, we can do some stuff now and then we'll have to wait a whole year before we can make any changes. So that's just slightly alarming because it feels like we're constantly catching up with ourselves or it just means that stuff won't happen for another year. And it gives rise to the feeling that committee systems are slow. My second one was just about the working party on full council. Where will that report to? Will that report back to governance to look at what that working party agrees so that we're all clear about what is going to be proposed for changes to full council, which yes, we know it isn't working terribly well at the moment.
Thank you.
No and yes. No, we don't, we can't only change the constitution at the AGM, we just see that as the natural point to do the first ones out of this review and then we'll programme in what we need to take throughout the year based upon the prioritisation from the groups and then the working group on the, on the changes to full council will come back here, yes.
Those reassuring replies. Thank you. Can I just make a comment on that myself, which is having looked at appendix one, I think quite a few of those issues actually will need to come quite urgently because what we can't do is continually change the committees, so anything that affects the change of committees is going to have to be done at the beginning, yeah. Diane, you wanted to?
Thank you Sue. I appreciate the way the report has been written in that we've got, you know, an action planning process and we've got things that can be done anyway, things that we need to consider and things that are urgent. I'd also like to see, as Sue's just referred to, as part of that actual planning process sort of roll out, we committed to this not being the only review because we realised that we wouldn't get it right first time or perhaps second time or third time, that it was an iterative process, that we would want of, dare I say, continuous improvement. But out of that, if we don't have key, if we don't agree key stages going through, it might just tip over into navel gazing. And, you know, I'd quite like us to have points to work towards that if we're doing this process, we should have the next tranche of recommendations for council for such as, so that we know that we're working towards something, full stop, move on, completing that piece, move on. It just, because we could, we could talk forever couldn't we about improving the committee system and what we get out of it and I don't think that will ever end, but as an intensive, officer and member intensive and resource intensive piece of work, we have to have a shape to that and a schedule and say, right, this piece of work is now ended, so what else do we need to do to improve? Because we've got, Joe and I are whips and we're looking at the role of full council at the moment, so at some point that report was commissioned by this committee and we'll have to come back here, so it's... Please, please can we have an action plan that's timely and smart?
I absolutely agree with you Diane, anybody want to comment on that? Mark then, please.
Thank you Chair. It's about the element about whether committees are appropriate and balanced, that's a kind of difficult one to face this side of, of an election without knowing the outcome of the election and the political balance of the administration because the nature of those committees will in themselves be dictated by the agenda of the parties that are wielding power, whether it's a coalition or otherwise, they'll be up to negotiation. So I'm not sure when we'd look to address those elements or whether that's something this committee can do in the run-up to an election. So I'm a bit unsure as to where that actually sits in this process and everything else. It doesn't feel until after the May election that that one can be addressed really. I don't know whether there's anything anyone would like to add, so that we'll know.
Are you talking about point four? That's about the remits of the committees rather than the makeup of the committees, so it's whether the work under them. Because each committee will be proportionately balanced in terms of its membership, so...
Well, the membership will be proportionally balanced, but it could be that an incoming administration would have a greater focus on one area than another and that in itself would by nature dictate what those committees would be asked to focus upon.
I think, I understand why you're saying, because I think what you're saying is that if a political party was in overall control for example and particularly wanted to do lots and lots of work in a certain area of the council's workload, that would tip the amount of work that committee had to do. But I think, I'm looking at David for confirmation here, we need to have certain headings that we have in the constitution for each committee because we've got to have the committees in place before, we can't rejig the committees each AGM before, like after the AGM if you see what I mean. Jo?
All right, thank you, yeah, no, I hear what Mark's saying, I think my understanding is that yes, that an incoming administration could change all the remits to the committee and say, I want, you know, ways to go with childrens or whatever it is. We didn't, that didn't happen this year, you know, there was a change of administration, we basically took all the remits as they were, possibly if there'd been more time, that might have been looked at, it would have certainly complicated the process, but certainly an incoming administration as I understand it can say, look, I want Bob to have this committee and Bob's really good at X, Y and Z and therefore I'm going to put X, Y and Z in that committee. I think it would be useful for us as a cross-party group that is broadly representative of the current administration, nonetheless to have a view as what a good balance of remits for the committees would be, recognising that any incoming administration may take a different view, may make changes. Now I understand, this is what I'd like confirmation on, is that because it's a change in the constitution, if the incoming administration wants to change all the committee's remits, that would have to be submitted as a proposal to the AGM and that would have to have, you know, five clear working days notice like anything else, which makes it slightly difficult if it's something that's not clear right after the election what's going to happen for that then to change. So that is another good reason I think that we ought to have a view and we ought to be satisfied in this forum, although we, you know, we may not, we may be making the wrong prediction of the election, to, you know, with a set of remits we think is sensible. I don't know if that's, if that makes sense.
No, that does make sense and there are lessons to be learned from the balance with, the balance of work from the committees from this year that we can then take into that piece of work. And I suppose that goes back to what we were saying earlier, that we are going to have to programme some of this work and that that we don't think can go to the AGM for whatever reason, we timetable that in to go to at a later time. And I agree, I think it's unlikely that a new administration would know by the AGM what priorities it was going to do and what, how that might play out in relation to workloads of each individual committee and a new structure of remits shall I say, rather than structure of committees under each committee. So that would need to be timetabled in and made sure that that went to an appropriate full council meeting.
Okay, that strikes me as something we have to delve into a bit further come the workshop. Are there any other committees on the main, sorry, any other comments on the main report or shall we move to comments on the lovely list of actions under appendix one? Okay, we'll move to appendix one then, so anybody wish to raise any points on any of that nice long list of actions? Christine?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yes, the one thing that I'm a bit disappointed about is, consider how we will address, this is, requires further work beyond this review, consider how we will address the recommendations from the involved report. So if I read that correctly, that means that we are shelving or putting to one side for some future date anything to do with how we're involving the public and stakeholders in our committees and decision-making. And I thought when we moved to the committee system, one of the key issues was that we have to have more public involvement and I think most of what Ruth Hubbard has written is about that. So I'm a little bit disappointed that this has been shoved to one side because all through the year we have on this committee been asking about it and we've always been saying it will happen, it will happen and it hasn't happened. So I would like that to be not put to one side but actually dealt with as soon as possible.
Laurie, do you want to?
I'd agree with councillor Gilligan-Cubbo on that as well. It's not, it's been a, it's been a challenge for, probably for me personally and the capacity of the organisation. I think what really strikes me from looking at the feedback we've had from members and from citizens and officers in this is that we've got the system in place and then some of the softer quality elements underneath, underpin the system are absolutely fundamental to where this goes next. So we've got the structure in place and we've built the arrangements to how we make decisions. Everything else has to flow through that now really, so don't read that as a sort of a long grass parking thing for it, it's absolutely not that. It's absolutely front and centre things that the council want to do. And if you see, if you look in the delivery plan for this year, that's in there and it's not only just about the role of things like local area committees, it's actually about how we better empower our staff across the organisation to have the right skills and capabilities to do better, to be better involving the public, how we properly embed that rough toolkit we started with in the committee. So what we really want to get to is not seeing committees themselves as the route to public engagement. So public engagement can happen through that and there's plenty in the review about public questions and about how citizens have a voice in those committees, but it's all the work that happens before that as well, it's all the strategy development, policy review and how, and our techniques and tools around how we undertake and involve citizens and how we collaborate with the voluntary sector for example. So please don't read it like that. What it should, what it is is about a bigger piece of work that we need to do as an organisation. Some of that is quick win, some of the things we need to do now. So for example, we've got the new, have you all seen Sheffield, which is a digital platform for that, but that starts to change some of that, how we go about doing that, but then it's about that richer stuff about how we do genuine public involvement in the decisions and strategies we develop as well. So it's not trying to get around that and it's not, it's absolutely not saying we're not doing that because that is not true.
Sue, could I just, sorry, yeah, and I just wanted to flag that there are quite a few of the actions in the list are around that kind of public involvement and engagement stuff. So things like, how can we free up policy committees to undertake more policy development work, which is where the engagement side of things come in? How can we better signpost people to what, how do we let people know out there what's going on in policy committees and how they can get involved? That was something that came back, some of those officer actions and how can we ensure the public, the public questions process is better? So there are elements of that in the work that we're intending to start straight away as well.
Okay. Can I just make a comment on that? So we're on point one under committee activity, it talks about more policy development and pre-decision scrutiny, I wonder if we should actually act on there and the public involvement because it's the public involvement at that point, I think would probably be helpful to make sure that that's clear.
Sorry, because I've not been part of the committee for a while, sorry. Going to this, the recommendations from the involved report, has the committee had sight of them or are they being held in a sealed box somewhere? And would those recommendations inform this work that we are doing now? In which case would it not be useful to see a copy in order to be able to use some of the recommendations, it may be all, it may be none, to inform this piece of work?
Councillor Mary Richard is absolutely, councillor Richard is absolutely right on this, I think. We haven't brought it here yet, what we did was as part of the decision that full council took in March and the package that went with that, so all the constitutional proposals and everything, that we got to a point with the work that involved had done to that point in time where we had a summary of the key issues and some of that really does carry through into the work that we've done on a more comprehensive report. A lot of the input to that report came from stakeholders, people and citizens in the city and voluntary sector partners as well. So what we're going to do is give them the sort of the comprehensive content of that, but we also want to bring it here as part of this review work as well so that members can use that as part of the decisions about the things we need to do in the year ahead. A lot of that is around, I mean, the two big things in there are about how we, where, this is in the report that went to full council as well really about what, how does Sheffield City Council as an organisation and maybe broadly as a city, how does it invest and how does it value public involvement and voice in the decisions it makes? And do we have a clear picture of what that looks like and do we understand why that matters? And the second point is about consistency of practice, so we've got some, we had Mark talking in the last committee really about some of the work that happens in Page Hall for example. We have some fantastic examples of practice in community involvement, it's not consistent across probably what we do in the organisation and that's, that's something that we need to fix as part of this because that's the layering into how we change that conversation with citizens, if you see what I mean. So we'll bring that report back here as part of this piece of work, but this was the first staging post into doing that.
Sorry, I'm still absolutely baffled Laurie, sorry about that. So you're saying that the recommendations from the involved report are going to go to full council or you're saying that they're going to come to us so that we can use them when we're doing the rest of this work?
The report will come here, the initial sort of interim report was fast-tracked, so it was a short slide pack which went to full council in March and last year as part of the proposals for the committee system so that it could inform the sort of change we need to undertake in the city, but effectively because of capacity we've not really, we've not really progressed that much further than we've got to at this stage. much further than we've got to at this stage. But the report itself will come here for the next meeting, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a feeling we do need to see that maybe as soon as we can to, yeah, to help us when we're moving forward in the workshops. Diane?
Thank you Sue. Yes, following on from that, really, it's about the adequacy of the briefings. We've got actual points down there around meetings and briefings, the cycles and the schedules and the set of expectations around briefings. And I think that is very important because it was raised with me throughout the consultation process that, as you've just said Laurie, there is excellent practice in some areas and then that isn't followed through in others. And, you know, so I think it's important that we can all, whichever committees we're on, we all have a comfort that we will, we will as members be adequately briefed and there will be papers produced in a timely fashion and that during the process of briefings, findings in the, in the, leading up to the decision-making meeting, we will have that capacity to involve whoever needs to speak to us. So it goes back to the participation again and so that we understand the issues around to allow us to make informed decisions. And I think that's, that's key to going forwards and I'm glad to see it in the proposed actions. But I, I think all of us around this table in one shape or form have said, yeah, we consider that to be, to be fundamental.
Thank you Chair. And one of the things we, piece of work we've started as part of the review work is about officer content on this and starting to think about how we, how we improve the way we produce reports and content for the committees, because that's come up multiple times in this meeting, but it's also come up just through conversations with members and with officers as well. How do we best ensure there's really good practice across there so the reports aren't long, complicated, they're arriving in a timely manner so that enables you to do your conversations with your members or constituents as well ahead of meetings and making sure that they are, they are succinct and kind of punchy reports which enable you to kind of quickly get into the information you need. So we've got a piece of work, we've started on that, which David, myself, Emily have been working on as well. And some of it is about training capacity with officers, some of it is about, yes, simple things like the format and the templates and that sort of thing as well. But that's something we see that we should bring back here as part of the wider officer action plan, saying these are things we're going to start doing ourselves.
Thank you Chair. With regard to the further works, there's a reference to the relationship between committees and local area committees. My concern here on the way that this is phrased and the way that the work may proceed is we could be hard baking in processes that favour the committees to the detriment of LAX. And I'm not sure we've ever truly addressed where the decision-making powers need to be in terms of, are we looking to devolve decision-making down to the communities or are we trying to keep them central within the town hall? Now, I don't know whether the involved process will also report back on how well the LAX are functioning and whether the citizenship want to see LAX taking a greater prominence here. But with the LAX and the committees' relationship being as a later strand in the work programme, I am concerned that that will leave the LAX permanently disadvantaged or their role downplayed. So any assurance you can give us that that won't be the case, that LAX may be given the prominence and we may all want to see them? I'm assuming that everyone here wants to see the LAX have a greater, greater responsibility and a greater decision-making capacity.
I think what I'd intended by writing that was really to have that discussion as you've just outlined, what is fundamentally, how are we setting out decisions, you know, what are LAX there for, what are policy committees there for and where are decisions made as a piece of work that goes beyond this review of the six-month review of governance that would probably need a broader conversation? So it wasn't an intention to long grass it, it was almost saying this goes beyond what we're trying to do here rather than in the future. Does that make sense?
Because if you, in the original SCORP document which we brought here to one of the, when we kicked the review off, we said there is something quite clear about the interaction between the committees and local area committees themselves. And we asked that question about, were we getting issues aggregated upwards to committees for the likes of the transport committees to be resolved, that sort of thing. But then also, did we, were things being sent down from committees to local area committees to get local voice from that area or think about what that issue meant in that area? And I probably, I don't know if we've got a huge amount of evidence of that from memory. But the point was to try and say, this is something about, it could be part of one of the answers to thinking about what the balance of responsibility in committees, for example, but we didn't want to go beyond that in terms of the scope of this review because there's a wider conversation with that. Also, LAC chairs have been, the chairs of local area committees who, who have been part of this conversation in the review, and I know Emily, we both went to speak to LAC chairs about that interaction as well. So it's, again, it's not about long grassing it, it's thinking about where our remit sits within this committee and whether there's choices about, for example, devolution to local area committees and what sort of decisions are made at those levels, which, again, might be one answer to how you free up more capacity at policy committee level, at city level, as an example.
Sure, it's just a comment really, that when we set about putting all this together, we did say that LAX would have parity of esteem with policy committees. And it's interesting that we're still saying down to LAX and up to committees as opposed to across or back and forth. And I think that's possibly a piece of culture change that we all really need to get our heads around.
I think that is absolutely true and that is my slip of the tongue. In fact, I remember when we did the, oh, it's my fault, it's definitely my fault. When we did the, when we drew out this committee structure last time, you'll probably remember that we deliberately didn't make it hierarchical anyway, that LAX were for that specific reason because they're as important a part of our decision-making structure as this committee or any other committee. So I think it, yeah, it's a culture change point, but it's also part of how we think of the whole system and the relative responsibilities of different elements of that system and how we get the right balance and how you probably think about where decisions are best made.
It's okay, it was councillor Jones who set it off, not you Laurie. Andrew?
Yeah, well, back to the issue of LAX. And really, it's the issue, I think people have been saying right from the beginning of, how many of these actions are going to happen by the AGM? Because from a LAX point of view, we're aware that there's other pieces of work going on alongside this governance review. I think it would be very helpful in terms of wherever we are in terms of the new constitution at the point, at the point of time of the AGM, if we understood, you know, what the changes were for the year 2023, 2024. I mean, I'm just looking at Christine, I mean, yesterday at TRC, we had two items which had been referred from one of the LAX to our committee, which we still hadn't dealt with. And yet the members of the public had brought those items up four or five months ago and you just think from a, if you're a member of the public, you can't, you don't want things to take that long. And clearly, as I said yesterday, one of them was a policy matter where the constitution says it should be, as currently stands, it sits at the policy committee, so was not a decision for the LAC. And the other one, one could be interpreted as a finance decision that could have been taken either by the policy committee or the LAC and the LAC says that they didn't want to take it and therefore pleased the policy committee to take it. So they were quite different decisions, but they were both delayed by four months because we haven't yet got a speedy process. And it's not a question of whether it's vertical or horizontal, it's a question that we haven't got a quick process that's fit for purpose. So I'm just keen that as we're doing all these bits of work, we join the dots up and, you know, whoever becomes the seven LAC chairs in May knows what responsibilities they've got and what's achievable.
Any other comments? Okay, I mean, I think I'll just comment on those last few comments that I think when we come to doing our workshops, where there are other pieces of work going on elsewhere, we need to make sure we've got that information and the feedback from those groups as to what they want so we don't end up coming up with two parallel but incompatible systems. Any other comments? Chris?
Yeah, I have another comment and this comes under the effective and timely reports section. You've definitely got to ensure the equality impact assessment process is robust. I would like to see the climate impact assessment process on there as well because that's really important and we have to meet it by 2030.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll add that in. I think we agreed that we'd take out equality, so it just includes impact assessments and we'll cover everything as part of that. Apologies for the omission.
Okay, any other comments, questions about the reports? I'll just make one extra comment myself, which is that going back to what we were saying earlier about getting the urgent stuff done first, looking through these lists, a lot of them, I think, are going to be needed in time for the AGM because the AGM is where we appoint people to committees. And if the committees haven't got their remits and their relationships, as it were, sorted out, then that's going to be very difficult. So I think we have got an awful lot of work to do on that to get that done as a huge priority. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, I will go back to where we started then and see if people are happy to consider and note the findings from this engagement phase, to note that the findings related to the full council have been passed to the full council working group, they're the findings that came out of the information collection, if you like. Consider whether the issues identified for the action planning phase are the right ones. So agree that those requiring a change to the system are taken forward to our workshops. Agree that those requiring improvements to communicate and support the system are actioned by officers and we will receive a progress report on that. Identify which issues are going to be actioned prior to the council's AGM, so I think we really need to, as I said, I think there's quite a lot that are going to need to be before the AGM. And consider how issues relating to the wider system are taken forwards. Are we all happy to agree those recommendations? Bearing in mind we've added a few little comments on to the actions, which I'm sure you'll put in for us. Okay, is there anything else we need to do? I was asked to finish early. Christine?
I'm going to be awkward here now. I just want to confirm, is there going to be time in the process? Because I know we are representative of the three parties here, but it would be good to have time to go back to our respective groups and say, this is what we're proposing. Is this going to be built in? Are we going to get that?
Does anyone want to comment?
So we're hoping to schedule the workshops so that, so that it'll be, if you like, an iterative process, so that you will have the opportunity to have a discussion, go away, come back and agree a final set of, or a more refined set of recommendations and that will continue up until, so we're aiming for, I think, your, your meeting is scheduled for the 6th of April, so that would be like the formal public hearing meeting, if you like, where you'd agree a set of recommendations then. So we have got, we're hoping to build in enough time for you to do that, yes.
And the other thing is also to make sure we update those members of the council who are not members of the represented groups, the independents. Can I ask a question about, it says the date of the next meeting is the 2nd of March. Will that be to report progress or will that actually be to start taking decisions?
I think we are hoping to turn it into a workshop if the committee is happy to do that. We are unlikely to be in a position to report anything formally at that point, so it would be helpful if we could use that as extra capacity for workshop, for time, that's already in your diaries for workshopping.
Okay, so in that case, the next formal meeting this committee would be?
6th of April.
6th of April, you're looking slightly nervous about that. Yeah, the 6th of April, because I think it's important that we record the next, the next formal meeting this committee is the 6th of April.
We just need to check that there's nothing else needs to be formally done outside of this for the 2nd of March, but I'll pick that up with Jay, but even if there is, if there's any spare time, we can then use that for a workshop session.
Okay, so keep, Jo?
Yeah, thanks, if you finish on that point. I just, I just wanted to say, I've had a brief look at Ruth Hubbard's questions and can I just say, they are quite scathing, I think, of us and the process that we followed here and of the system, I suppose more of the system that we've set up. Fairly empty and meaningless twatly is one phrase that pops out. Another comment is, why has the governance committee not even used its own engagement toolkit that it says all policy committees should be using even though non-AR, which I think, which I take exception to in terms of waste of streets enough, I say, but, you know, I understand the spirit of the comment. I, you know, you wouldn't have got that from the discussion that we've just had and I just hope that we can. I recall that we proposed at the beginning of the governance committee process that we add, we co-opt a member from the outside. Oh no, clearly we didn't do that. But if somebody out there has that much interest in the minutiae of governance, possibly more than many members of the council do, I hope we can make better use of them than we have done. As just a comment, thank you.
Sorry Sue, I think Christine and then I both said about the involved thing, that we need to use those, be able to see that report so that we can use it to inform the work we're doing. So I don't think we ignored all that completely, Jo, I think we both said very clearly, and Sue agreed with us, that that would be the way that we would be working. And I accept that Ruth, you know, has the same tendency as I certainly have of amiracking over this, but she's not the only person out there who is thinking these things. And also, she's not the only person inside here who is thinking those things. So, you know, getting those comments and getting those questions is always useful, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we would say, well, let's co-opt that person onto this committee, which is what I think you were suggesting. I think we've got some pretty good expertise here and we have been raising those issues ourselves.
As ever, through the original transitions work, Ruth and colleagues from It's Our City, but also from other representatives from the city, including things like organisations like Sheffield Democracy, had a real role in some of that and they have a real voice in it and they still contribute and comment to things we do. When I read Ruth's comments as well, there's a lot of insight there, which I don't, when we respond to them, I hope we don't, I try not to go back and just kind of be defensive. They're there to be accepting that. I mean, one of the options we could do is, the timetable is tight as we've discussed here, there is an option for doing some sort of more public workshops on some of this one as we're doing the thinking, but we can go away and come with some suggestions on that if members were to be keen recognising the time constraints. But it is, it is a, we always said from day one, didn't we, that first model was never going to be absolutely right, it was going to be a version 1.0 or whatever and we were always going to iterate and develop it. So, and that's never going to stop even after we implement the review findings either, it's going to be an ongoing developmental process really. So Ruth has some great insight and is incredibly knowledgeable on this, it should be, it should be said, so.
Thank you Christine.
Yeah, thank you for that. I have no objection to having a layperson, is that the right word? We can use it, a member of the public, because I know in health scrutiny boards and things, you bring in a layperson. We all have some expertise, but we do, or we can, all of us get into the bunker mentality because we live in the organisation and we work within the parameters of the organisation. And it is always helpful to have somebody who's outside of that organisation to comment. So I would not be upset if we wanted to have somebody sit on this as a co-opted member. I'm not saying from next week or anything, but, you know, I just think that's not a bad idea to look at our governance procedures and comment. That's all.
Probably want to pick up in the workshops.
I was just going to ask, there is no reason, is the, my understanding, why we can't actually call witnesses to the workshops, which is, which is probably something we could think about, depending on which topics we're discussing at each, at each point, that's something we should probably... something we should probably be considering.
And, and we could also think, Chair, about, you know, when we're coming up with, when we start workshopping the proposals and thinking about solutions to them, there's, there's ways of sharing some of that as well and to making sure it's sort of, we're all, we're meeting our collective expectations about where we want to be in the system. But also about whether that, that addresses some of the public challenge and the challenge we've heard back as well. So we, again, we need to think about that as part of the timetable. We can discuss it in the workshops, if you like.
Yeah, I think, I think that very helps. I think maybe if we have a timetable of roughly where we're going to go with each workshop and look at where in there would be appropriate to ask people to come in to give views at the relevant point. Okay. Are there any more comments or questions? Okay. In that case, with the possibility that we may meet on the 2nd of March, but that we may most likely meet on the 6th of April. Thank you, and I'll close the meeting.